Opening statement, which says that this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on Wednesday, the 28th of September 2016, 7:35 PM in the municipal complex. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, the Trenton Times, the Trentonian, and Comcast Cable of New Jersey Inc. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. Would you call the roll for us, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Clayton?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Flewen?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Ms. Surin?
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Here.
Thank you.
Before we start business, I would like to welcome John Callahan to our number. He will make this a legal sort of session this evening, so we value his presence very much. As you're well aware, we've got a lot of housekeeping to do before we really come to the cases in hand. We have to authorize or memorialize some resolutions and findings of fact. So we'll start with the minutes of the 16th of March. These were circulated and I think available on the web as well. Are there any comments, changes, amendments needed, or are these acceptable as presented? If the latter, I'd like a motion to accept and a second, and we will vote with a voice vote on that.
Move to approve the minutes?
We have a move to approve as presented. Is there a second for that? We have a second for that.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Flewen?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we have the findings of fact. The first one being for 159 Snowden Lane. That has the file number Z1515179V. Again, these were circulated to us. If there are any comments or changes required, either by the people to whom it applies or from members of the Board, now is the time. If not, again, a motion to accept.
I move to accept.
We have a motion to accept, a second.
I'll second that.
We have a second. And since our attorney knows who can vote on it, she will call the roll.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Approved.
The next one of the findings of fact is 194 Linden Lane, which carries the file Same procedure?
I move to accept.
We have a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
We have a second for that motion. Our attorney will decide who can vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
The next one is 296 Shady Brook Lane, which carries the file number Z1616378V.
I move to accept.
I have a motion to accept and a second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
The penultimate one of these is 38 Hillside Road with the file number Z161638UV.
Move to accept.
A motion to accept as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a second for that motion.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And the last in this fascinating sequence is 256 Snowden Lane with the file number
Move to accept.
A motion to accept.
I second.
We've got a second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yep.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Okay. So now we come to the applications we are going to hear this evening. The first of these is 397 Cherry Hill Road. It's block 4,000, lot 12, in the RB zone, and carries the case number Z1515305UPN. What I would like to do is to ask Mr. Bridger to read his memorandum into the record.
Okay, before we get to that, Mr. Chairman, Richard Schatzman, attorney. I assume the affidavit of publication and the affidavit of service is in order?
Yes, I was about to say that. It's correct. The Board has jurisdiction.
Since there's only six members and it's a used variance, I, in 49 years with this Board or any other Board, I only go with seven members, so we'll have to take jurisdiction and carry it.
Mr. Schatzman, we were expecting one more Board member. I'm not sure if she's going to make it. Would you like us to take another application out of order to see if she does join us?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll do the next one. I have the next one as well.
I can't hear what you're saying because your microphone is either not in or you're not speaking into it. You're asking to carry the case?
Chairman Royce, what Chairman Royce, what I was suggesting to Mr. Schatzman is we could take the next application out of order. Mr. Schatzman's representing that applicant as well, and we'll see if we have another Board member join us because we were expecting one more member. I'm at guys.
Taking one more Board member this evening?
Oh, I misunderstood that. Yes, all right, fine. So then let's take the next case and we'll come back to you. I misunderstood what we were up to, so let's try it again. So the next case is 428 Mount Lucas Road, which is block 4201, lot 14, in the RB zone, and it carries the case number Z1616374V.
I'll note for the record that the noticing is in order and the Board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
So all of the paperwork required from the applicant is in order, is that right?
That's correct for publication and noticing.
So what I'll do is to ask Mr. Bridger to read his minutes into the record. And I would suggest that you come and sit down at the table.
Mr. Schatzman, would you prefer?
I would suggest you come and sit at the table where there are two working microphones. And first of all, it makes it more personal. We can look you more closely in the eyes. And secondly, you're more likely to be heard. So Mr. Bridger has the first go.
Mr. Bridger, I'll just swing you in for the evening. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Good evening. The applicant's DMP Private Lending LLC are the owner. Excuse me, applicant's Jeffrey Rogers. They're seeking a hardship C1 variance and a C2 variance, requesting to permit the construction of a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot. The lot does not meet the required lot area, lot width, or lot frontage. Additional variances are requested for the required setback-to-height ratio and the right side yard setback. Property is located in the RB zone and is subject to the use-in-bulk regulations in accordance with Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The subject lot is noncomplying with respect to the required lot area, which is 130,680 square feet. The existing lot area is 35,481. It's noncomplying with respect to the required 200-foot lot width. The existing's 151. And it's also noncomplying with the lot frontage, the 200-square-foot requirement, whereas the existing's 151. And the subject property is noncomplying with respect to the following bulk requirements. The building setback-to-height ratio, the requirement's 1.5 to 1, the existing, it's noncomplying. And the right side yard setback is 35 feet required, existing's 16 feet. The applicant is proposing to demolish the majority of the 1,200-square-foot, one-story single-family dwelling and construct a new 3,974-square-foot, four-bedroom, single-family home. The applicant should address whether they have contacted any adjoining property owners and either offered to sell the subject property to them or to inquire if they would sell the applicant sufficient lot area to create a complying lot. The proposed single-family dwelling will require the following variances. Lot area, the requirement's 13680 square feet. The proposed is 45481. Lot width, the requirement's 200. The proposed is 151. Lot frontage, the requirement's 200. The proposed is 151. The right yard setback, the requirement's 35 feet, whereas the proposed is 16 feet. And the setback height back requirement's 1.5 to 1, and the proposed is 1 to 2.18. It's requested consideration under both the C1 and the C2 variance criteria. I'd be glad to answer any questions the Board might have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger?
Derek, what size house, from a square footage perspective, could this lot, could be built on this lot as of right?
Derek, wait me a second. There's a proportional FAR which equates to 12.38% of the required lot area, the lot area of 45,000 square feet. They're building 3,974-square-foot house, which is 8.75. I could do the math of the, it's probably, I'd have to calculate it, but the required, they could go up to 12.38% of 45,000, 481, and they're at 8.5% instead of the 12.5%. So it's not quite at the max.
Other questions? Okay. And if you would care to make the case?
Yes. We have one witness tonight, Mr. David Singer. Let him be sworn in in accordance with the municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey.
Mr. Singer, would you agree to write in? If your affirmative testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Okay. You want to give us your qualifications and what you do and how these plans were prepared, please?
Yes. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. Licensed in Pennsylvania by exam in 1988. Graduate of Syracuse University with a Master of Architecture in the University of Pennsylvania. I have over 30 years total experience. I worked for the Vaughan Organization, USA Architects, Frarity and Freitag, and several other small firms. I'm currently self-employed for the last eight years. And I've done much residential work in those last eight years, working for various developers and on projects very similar to this.
You haven't appeared before this Board before, though.
I've not been before this Board. I've spoken before or given testimony before Trenton, City of Trenton, Township of Lawrence, Township of Ewing, several other townships, north, south.
I think we should have no trouble accepting qualifications. Mr. Bridger?
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Callahan's question. That would be a 5680 square foot maximum FAR.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, okay, Mr. Singer, you visited the site?
Yes.
And you prepared the plans?
Yes.
And you're somewhat familiar with the municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And the local Princeton Development Ordinance, correct?
Yes.
You wanted to describe the project for us and the Board, please?
Yes. The, as you can see in your plans, and they have a set of drawings that are identical.
There's an easel, and if you can put them up there so we can see them.
Schatzman, do you want to mark any of these as a signature?
Yeah, if you want to describe, describe the, you can mark it. Describe what you're, what's on the easel now, Mr. Singer, please.
Certainly, drawing ZB1 is on the easel. This drawing summarizes. This drawing summarizes all of the site information that we're required to make available. It summarizes all the site information that we're making available to this Board in order to help make a decision.
All right, so would you mark that A1 and date it 9/28/2016, please?
Briefly, there's a site plan with our proposed development overlaid over the existing footprint of the existing single-family residence. There's an existing garage, detached garage, which will remain, and we're proposing a breezeway connection. We're proposing a six-foot extension into the front yard, a new walkway, maintain existing driveway, and a small patio off the back. You can see, this is our setback line to the adjacent property where the existing building is currently in violation. And so we, wishing to build up a full two stories, will extend that violation. This is just an area map of the township, the general location along, along the street. This is the buffer area of the property. Some of the adjacent properties, in terms of their situation, size can be seen and indicate the difficulty it is for this particular property to meet the minimum area and setback The other issue with this particular site, and it's not something that shows up on any sort of political map or physical survey, but it's part of the geological conditions of the site, are large rock outcroppings. And in fact, the existing house is built over top of one of these very large rock outcroppings. And that probably dictated its current position. This presents the major difficulty of this application. Obviously, there's room within the setbacks to construct what we want to construct and not have the setback-to-height ratio exceed the limits prescribed by this, by your ordinance.
But if you knocked down the house and did everything in conformance with the ordinance, why would that present a problem or a hardship, close quote?
I think, I think not knowing where we can build safely without doing extensive rock removal, which could require blasting, which would be another permit we would have to get. I don't know how we could do it really quietly. And I think just the investigation, the subsurface investigation, would be expensive because we really would have to excavate and find out, are we on top of a rock mountain? Is it really possible to even build? For the other location.
You made an investigation of the site because you testified you were on the site, and you did find that there are, with naked eye, a lot of these tremendous rocks.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few rock outcroppings. So it's not just, I think, I think the building was located probably in the most expeditious location.
But you don't know that.
No, and not without extensive, but, but we are, we are building a residence, and there is a residence here.
There's a residence here, and you don't know what else on the property you can build without?
If we have to do that, then why, why go ahead with the project? Because it's going to be too expensive. Nobody has to do that for any other house. You know, it's just.
While you've got that one up, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
I've just got it in front of me, and I can see it. You've put dotted lines on this diagram, which are the required setbacks for a lot in this district.
Yes.
I assume that's what they are.
Yes.
And you've done a, you're going to do a complete knockdown of the existing house. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, not a complete, we're going to leave the foundation. The existing foundation will remain.
Is that big rock underneath that you're telling me about?
Right, yeah. So we would.
There's nothing above ground that you're going to leave, as I understand.
Well, part of the foundation does extend above ground, about three or four feet of foundation.
Yeah, well, the garage is within the dotted line. Why is it, I mean, one, some, something you have to convince me about is that why should you be different from other people who come in with an undersized lot and say they want to build a property on it? They show us the buildable area, and they say, we will put a fully conforming house in that space. Is there something peculiar about this property that prevents you from doing that?
I think it's the fact that.
Do I misunderstand the diagram?
If, if we go and find large rocks anywhere else here, it would preclude us the ability to comply.
My only concern is you're, you're speculating and.
They're visible.
It's, it's not unique to this lot. Rock outcroppings in that area of Princeton is not, are not unique. But without doing any sort of minimal soil investigation, then, you know, you're just taking it as, as, you know, as a fait accompli, that there's no other place to build on a lot that would allow it to conform.
We're operating blind, okay? Because we don't know what the subsurface conditions are.
Exactly.
And there's really no way to tell. And let me, let me tell you a story about when I worked in Trenton. Do you know the building at the corner of State and Willow? It's currently occupied by some state offices.
Right.
They did their soil investigations as required because it was state-funded, and they found large out, rock outcroppings, and they had a blast for about a week. I know, because I was working downtown. So, you know, rock is not something you want to play around with.
No, I, I recognize.
It's not something you can just say, well, just dig over here and it'll be all right. It's, no.
No, I'm not trying.
Just because you can't see it doesn't mean it's not there. And, and the fact that we do have big, I mean, this is a big rock under here. I think it's just tempting fate and a way just to, you know, pour a lot of money into the ground and not, you know, at some point, you're not going to see a return here, okay? Unless maybe you live here 100 years or you inflate the property values that much. But, you know, it's, it's, it's not something that, not for, not for single-family residents. I don't know. Is it worth it to live in Princeton and do it? Maybe it is for somebody, but I, not, not in this application.
All right, well, I, I think, you know, I'm not comfortable, you know, just accepting the fact that there's no other place to build, and because you're asking for, in my opinion, a very significant variance. And as, as, you know, Chairman Royce said, you know, we've had many, many people constantly come to us and build on, on nonconforming lots, saying right out, we'll conform to all the setbacks and yard requirements and bulk requirements. You're basically saying you don't want to do the investigation and find out if you can do that. Well, can you do some sort of investigation, like the Board asks, you know, that won't call that, that's a compromise, and come back and see what we can do and, you know?
We could try, I don't know if like a GPR, ground penetrating radar, would give us sort of a, an underground profile of.
Well, why don't we talk to a geologist, and maybe that's, that's a solution to make the Board comfortable? Okay?
Well, gossiping with a geologist is no better than gossiping here.
No, I mean, a geologist with data, with data, with data.
Why you shouldn't do what normally people do when they have an undersized lot. We recognize that it's an undersized lot. You've got required setbacks, and people say, we can build in that space. And until, until you demonstrate that you can't, what you say is not very useful.
I mean, our alternative is to leave the current building there, which is also nonconforming by height.
The alternative is to, the alternative is to conform to the, to the height-to-setback ratio.
Does it, what, what, well, how do you feel about the existing building? Because it is nonconforming. It doesn't meet the height-to-setback ratio now, as I've demonstrated on.
Yeah, on your elevation sheet, you showed that. But there's a significant difference between 1.5 to 1 and 1.2 or slightly higher, which is what the existing one-story is now.
Well, but that's, yeah, it's a matter of degree. I mean, we've got a small house. It's a small difference. We want to build a larger house. It's doesn't, it's not an oversized house with a lot. We're certainly under all the other requirements, but we have, we're constricted by, you know, the field conditions. So we propose to use the existing footprint and extend it up. That's simply what we want to do. You already have, you already have a nonconforming condition. We want to extend it. Yes, we'll make it worse, but it doesn't really, it's going to certainly improve this house and bring it up to the standard of the other houses in the neighborhood.
How close is the house to the side of it? I'm noticing how close it is to the, to the lot.
House here is, well, this, this neighboring lot, this house is way, I mean, it's, it's quite far back.
No, the house to the right is setback significant.
This house in the front is, is, I mean, that lot, there's nothing conforming about this house at all. And it's right on top of our garage. But where we're located on the lot, we're building as far away from that house as we possibly can because we're on our existing footprint. So the, the small house here on lot, what is that? Lot 15. It's a one and a half story. It's a modest house, such as this. So they're, these two are currently in, in scale. But this house will be more in scale with, with the other houses that are currently, that have been improved along this stretch of road. I think the other houses are not really going to be impacted by it. I think that it's going to bring it more in conformance with the look of the neighborhood. And it's, it's certainly, you know, beneficial by making it cost-effective, is going to make it affordable, so. If we have to invest a lot of money.
Make it affordable, did you say?
Well, more affordable. I mean, if we have to invest, if we have to invest $100,000 in geotechnical surveys to determine where the rocks are. That's going to go on the price of the house, right? I mean, but that's not money you can really recover.
But a geotechnical investigation, my experience in this, and I'm an architect, and I don't think you'd come anywhere close to $100,000.
What if we have to do rock removal? What if we have to do rock removal?
Now, we're asking you to do the study first. We're asking.
What if, I mean, what if we have a lot of rocks here? Who's going to determine?
No.
Is this Board going to determine that where, what's the break point? Too many rocks or not enough rock? You know what I'm saying?
Well, you don't, you don't get to that question until you do the study.
I think we need to know where, where we'll stand when we get to that question because then that will determine whether or not it makes sense for us to do the study.
Never know, never know you get to the Board on that one.
I don't think that's fair, no.
No, I think it's very fair.
I don't think that's fair at all.
You don't have to think it's fair. All we're asking for you to do is do a, do a subsurface investigation and then come back and essentially speak to us with facts that this is, you know, looking around the lot, it would be very difficult to conform. And then we have at least more information to make a decision.
Right.
Right.
Mr. Schatzman, one question for you. Is your witness going to address, I assume, the inability to get additional land?
Yes.
Because we do have a lot area variance here or to sell their lot to somebody?
Yeah, the two lot... You want to describe that while we're... That's, in other words...
Well...
In order to get the frontage, the width, and the lot area, you... I ask you a question...
Well, we just create more deficiencies with the neighboring properties, okay?
The neighboring properties are built up, correct?
Yeah. They're already improved, so they're not liable to, you know, put themselves in a poorer position if they need to add on.
And you took a look at the lot in the neighborhood, did you not?
Yes.
And they're about the same size as this lot?
They vary. I mean, some are larger, some are smaller. It's sort of in the middle, you know?
And the houses are about the same size as the proposed, am I correct?
Yes. There are many houses that have been improved to at least this size, if not larger.
And the house, in your view, as an architect, fits women in the neighborhood, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Senior, a question for you. Is it your testimony that the immediately adjacent lots are undersized?
Oh, yeah. Lot 15 definitely is undersized. There's no question about that.
How about the other side?
I don't have the square footage of lot 13. But if... We're about... Let's see, about a third. So we'd need almost 85,000 square feet. I don't think that lot 13, unless it goes back here quite a ways, could satisfy that. And then we might create another... Exacerbate their lot frontage condition because if we don't have 200 feet, they certainly don't have 200 feet. And if we take out 50 feet, and I don't see how we'll get 80,000 square feet out of any of our neighbors without buying them out totally and taking their development out. I mean, if that's what you want, then... But that's not the character of this neighborhood.
I just want to get the... I just want... The applicant wants to say a few words and then if I have a minute with my client and then we'll be back. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman? Want to say... You want to be sworn in?
Yeah. Hold on, hold on.
Who are you and be sworn in?
If you'd raise your right hand, Mr. Rogers, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Rogers. One of the guys who's working on this project. The issue we have with the stones, if you just physically are on the property, when you go into the basement, there's only about half of the basement is dug. The other half isn't dug out deep because there's about a minivan-sized boulder creeping out of the ground. And I actually know the family that built the house originally back, a few generations back. He said that the reason they didn't continue was because of that stone. And they also ran into the same stone when they were doing the garage foundation for where that is. I've also spoken to the neighbor on the other side, the lot 13, I think it was, who's just been digging out his yard just to kind of change the driveway a little bit and just been massive boulder after massive boulder after massive boulder. If we run into any sort of boulders the size of a minivan that we're dealing with right now, it essentially sinks the project and it's no longer a viable thing. I've had a few different builders out there. They've all said, "If we have to deal with that boulder, you're looking at extreme costs that are going to sink the project." So that's where I stand with that. That's why we wanted to keep the basement where it was so that we wouldn't run into the problem of digging, finding more stone. Initially, we did want to dig a nice, deep basement, but every builder we've had in there, everybody says, "I'm not dealing with that stone. It's just too big." I mean, if you want to pay for it, you want to run the risk, sure. But it's just not a gamble that we're willing to take there.
Some sort of investigation to give more facts and backs or maybe like to...
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So we'll take your advice. We'll continue it. We'll do an investigation with facts that will, you know, that you can consider when we, you know, postpone meeting and see if we, A, have a hardship and also we'll have a little bit more information for C2 under Calhoun versus Warren Township. So we would ask that the board continue it. We'll give you an extension until November's meeting, perhaps.
I don't have the schedule, isn't it?
November, November 9th? Is that... One second.
But I think we've tried to say some things about what we believe, and you should take those into account.
Right.
You've got enough space within the dotted lines that represent the permitted setbacks on an undersized lot in this region to put a house. And I don't know whether it has to have foundations that are continuous or whether you can build it on stilts or whatever, but I don't see, when you've knocked down a piece of property, why you can't put on the lot that you've got something which complies.
Yeah.
That's just bad architecture.
Well, if there's...
Or bad engineering.
Yeah, well, if there's extreme topographical conditions under the statute, then...
Maybe you shouldn't build on the lot. Turn it into a green space.
Is it acceptable?
Well, I think there are alternatives to building on the lot to what you've shown. What we're asking is do a further investigation, look at the overall footprint that you have now, and see if you can configure something that would conform, I guess, one thing within that footprint. Again, you know, again, you have a sizable portion or a portion of the house that building up would require a variance. But you have area between the garage, the freeway, the existing foundation, and maybe some minimal work on additional foundations. Just look at it all and because it's... I think what you've come before us to ask, given the information you've given us, I don't think is practical for us to make a decision.
Fair enough.
Chairman Royce, is that acceptable to the board to carry it to November 9th? Is that correct?
So we can carry it to the November 9th meeting?
And the applicant will not have to re-notice since we're announcing tonight the continued date. I just wanted to propose...
To notify by regular mail all of the neighbors?
Mr. Schatzman, it's the board's practice to ask that when something's carried, another notice be sent out by first-class mail, not certified mail. And this is a request the board makes. We understand that it's not technically required, but...
Fine, that's what you want.
And Chairman Royce, since I don't know if there are people here tonight who would like to speak, but perhaps we should open it up for comment, just in case there's anybody here tonight.
We can ask that question at this point, and that will give you some input as well. Is there anyone in the audience who was here to address this case? I see no hands.
All right, here's one, Chairman.
Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Do you wish to make any comment at this time?
Yes.
Okay, so let's do that.
I'll give you an extension, and I'll also give you an oral extension. Until November 10th, I'll send Derek a letter confirming that.
Good. All right. So can we go back to the case we were going to do first now or...
No. Well, the seventh didn't show up, so...
Hasn't shown. All right.
All right, then, Mr. Schatzman, you're asking the board then to carry this as well to...
November 9th.
November 9th. I don't know if we need an extension?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll give you an extension to November 10th. I'll confirm it in writing with a letter to Derek. I'll send out... I'll send out letters as well by first-class mail.
Yeah.
One owner of a piece of properties in New South Wales, Australia, so I'll send it airmail to him.
Email is probably even faster.
Yeah, he'll probably get it faster than they get it in Princeton. All right?
It's true. Scan it and email it. I didn't understand the relationship of your client who spoke to the property itself. You just said an owner is in Australia.
He's the applicant. He's not the owner, he's the applicant. He's... He has permission from the owner to process the application. He's the applicant and the owner has signed a consent on the application to proceed, okay?
I wonder, Mr. Chairman, what are we looking for in terms of a report on the...
We're looking for them to come back with a house plan which meets...
Of course, of course, Royce.
The setbacks. And if they can't do that, then they need to have real justification for being unable to meet the setbacks for the permitted.
Sure. But do we want to see documentation on the analysis that's done for the property?
Yeah, we need some facts. We try not to work on speculation.
Of course.
If everywhere's got rocks underneath and you've got a really nice, sound foundation, you just dig down to the rocks and build it.
The way I understand it, we'll try to conform to, as Mr. Collins said, try to conform to the setback lines. We have to go a little bit over or...
A little bit over the setbacks.
A little over the setbacks.
I think that would be a very bad thing to do. You've got an architect that should be able to design a house that fits on that property.
Do an investigation and then make a decision. You've heard what we've had to say. So please do an investigation and then look at what you've done and come back to it.
Yeah, right.
To Mr. Callanan's point, though, a geotechnical investigation by, you know, we don't want to just come back with... Give them some direction on the... Right, that's my point.
Well, we would like probably, you know, a geotechnical investigation and then some discussion on potential for building on the lot by a geotechnical engineer.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you for your time.
We now have another case, so if you could vacate your position, Mr. Tar.
What?
Richie?
What? Got to get it.
Sure. Mr. Ford, yes. You are recognized.
I'll be right back, excuse me.
Yes, we'll wait a few moments. Are we okay?
Yep. It was a good move, though.
Okay, we will hear the last case that we have before us this evening, which is 342 Nassau Street. That's block 3401, Lot 14 in the R-O zone and the Jug Town Historic District. Where is the case number? Why can't I find it?
Probably don't have the number.
Yes, it has the following case number, Z1616352UV. And what I will ask is Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memo, and then Mr. Tar will take the floor and overwhelm us.
Mr. Bridger, before you start, I'll just indicate for the record that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the applicant's...
Good evening, the applicant. East Ridge Design LTD is seeking a use variance and minor site plan approval to permit a retail use where such use is not permitted. Excuse me. Pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-71, a D1 variance is required when a use or principal structure in a district is restricted against such use. The applicant is seeking approval to permit the establishment of a retail use on the first floor. The current use is an interior design office, and there's a two-story residential apartment as you face the building to the left. Property's located at the northwest corner of Nassau Street and Harrison Street. The lot contains 5,904 square feet and is located in the R-O zone. The adjacent properties are commercial office buildings, restaurants, grocery store, real estate office, joint occupancy buildings, and single-family uses. The applicant's seeking variance relief to permit a sales room in the existing first-floor front room. It'll be a 20 by 20 room. The space currently serves as a showroom for the interior design business. No internal or external alterations are required. The applicant is not proposing any site improvements, although there's a technical requirement for a site plan. That was all done administratively as a minor site plan. It was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, at which time they installed a new awning, reconfigured the rear porch, replaced the front stoop to the apartments. They added new sidewalks, landscaping, and along the parking area. And as far as the zoning, a conditional use and site plan authorization was granted in 1979 to permit the conversion of what at that time was an existing two-family dwelling into its current configuration. A D1 use variance similar to this was granted in 2003 to permit an interior design firm to utilize the front showroom for retail space, retail sales. I have attached the findings of fact to both of these cases, to this memo. The use variance relates to that it's not permitted on this site. They need a D1 use variance. The parking complies. Applicant should address the number of employees on site and the amount of traffic to be generated by the office in the proposed retail use. The retail use is not a permitted use in the R-O zone, so there's no parking standard. The previous variance permitting retail use utilized Section 178279, which provides the following: For any permitted building and uses for which no other requirements are set forth, the appropriate and comparable off-street parking requirements shall be determined by the planning board, taking into consideration the amount of traffic to be generated thereby and the likelihood of all-day or short-term use of the parking spaces. For comparison's sake, the parking requirement for retail and the adjoining NB use is one space for every 300 square feet on the ground floor and one space for every 450 square feet on other floors. The application notes a request for a setback variance for a trash enclosure to be permitted closer than the required five-foot setback. The applicant has submitted a survey that indicates the trash enclosure complies with a five-foot setback and the variance is no longer required. The D1 variance must be considered under the following manner: No variance or other relief may be granted under the terms of this section unless such variance or other release can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Following items should be considered when reviewing the use variance. The burden of proof, the applicant has the burden of demonstrating special reasons for granting of the variance, as well as the negative criteria. And special reasons may be found where the proposed use inherently serves a public good such as a school, hospital, or public housing, where the owner would suffer undue hardship if required to use the property in compliance with the permitted uses in the zone and where the use would serve the general welfare because the proposed site is particularly suited to the proposed use. As you're all aware, there is a requirement of a supermajority for a use variance which requires five affirmative votes. That's my summary. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger? No. Thank you, Mr. Bridger. Mr. Tar.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Perhaps we could all be sworn...
As you're all aware, there is a requirement of a supermajority for a use variance, which requires five affirmative votes. That's my summary. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger? No. Thank you, Mr. Bridger. Mr. Tarr?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Perhaps we could all be sworn, Katie Eastridge is on my left, Jim Kamalak, the engineer, is to my right, and Elizabeth McKenzie, the planner, is in the first row, if we could be sworn.
All right, if you'd all raise your right hand, you all swear that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Do.
Good. And all the paperwork is completed properly?
Yeah, I think I can...
Good, so we can take jurisdiction.
What I find fascinating about this case is that back in 2003, the Borough Zoning Board, this board, granted an interior designer who occupied the building, a use variance for this very purpose, to use the 20-by-20 square foot room down on the first floor for retail sales in conjunction with that fellow's interior design business. What you did, though, that was a little unusual, was to limit that variance to his business and his business only. The Borough Board did that a few times over the years. In my experience, it's not the common practice. Variants tend to run with the land, and here we have an interior designer who wants to do exactly the same thing that the fellow did in 2003, but there was an intervening office use of the building, and so Mr. Bridger's not in a position, given the way the resolution was drawn, to simply say that it was permitted in the same way that the last fellow was. I find that interesting. Nevertheless, we'll now proceed. Mr. Jim Kamalak is a professional engineer licensed in New Jersey who has appeared here before. He prepared the drawings, and I'd ask that he be accepted as an expert in civil engineering.
Sure. James Kamalak, C-H-M-I-E-L-A-K, with Ken Show Resources here in Princeton.
And so are you a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to take a few minutes just to...
Bring the microphone a little closer so that I can hear and it will be recorded.
We'd like to take a few minutes just to go over the property location and the site conditions. We've included on these slides, as you can see above, a key map which highlights the property in blue. It's located on the west corner of Harrison Street and Nassau Street. It's an existing historic building in the historic district, and you can see the location by the blue arrow. Also, this property is located in the R-O Zone, and you can see that the adjacent zones are the neighborhood business and the R3 that are separated by roadways and intervening This key map is included on your plans as well. Secondly, on Slide number three, we've included the overall view of this property on the west corner, and in particular, you can see the subject building highlighted in yellow at the corner of Harrison Street and Nassau Street. And you can see that this particular property is smaller than the surrounding properties and contains the existing historic structure, as well as the parking lot to the rear and landscaping sidewalk and porch along the frontage on Nassau Street. This application does not propose any construction activities or substantial disturbance. The intention here is to continue the use that was previously undertaken in the same general context, but obtain the use variance necessary to do that. At the rear of the building, you can see on the exhibit the existing parking lot, which is accessed by Harrison Street. And if I go to Slide four, this lot view, you can see the seven existing parking stalls, which, in terms of the number of stalls, do comply with the ordinance requirement based on the uses within the building and the floor area. And there is an access driveway from Harrison Street to this parking lot. And the parking lot will remain as gravel, and as Mr. Bridger said previously, there have been some site enhancements to the property that have enhanced the landscaping, some of the walkways, and also included a nicely fenced-in trash and recycling enclosure, which is in the lower left-hand corner, if you're looking at this particular slide of the existing building, to efficiently screen the trash cans. And that's also surrounded by landscaping in a nice manner. If you've been out to the site and have seen it, it looks very nice. To conclude that, the review of these minor site enhancements were reviewed by HPC, and the HPC review officer did review the compliance plan pursuant to the December 2015 resolution to comply with the conditions of that approval relative to the HPC review in the context of a minor site plan. So a lot of the site review and details of those minor enhancements have already been evaluated, reviewed, and complied with, and really, we're not here to address any additional improvement. So from an engineering standpoint, I really don't have that much more to say, but we did want to introduce the overall lot, the configuration, how the building sits on the property, as you can see on this slide. And I think it's important to point out the various setbacks that exist, which are part of the application relative to the variance relief. We have a side yard setback, a minimum existing non-conforming condition of 1.6 feet, the front yard setback of 10.2 feet, and the side yard setback at 5.1 feet. So the red dashed line shows what the ordinance-required setbacks are, and this is just a condition, an existing condition that the property owner just has to deal with, which will be further addressed by our planner in a few minutes.
Could I just ask you one question before you take that one off? Is there a handicapped entrance to the building?
No, there isn't.
No. Okay.
Okay.
Now, you want to consider this Exhibit A1?
That would be fine, thank you. That'll hold four slides, and we'll give a copy to staff. So we'd like to move on. Mrs. Eastridge has been sworn. I've asked her just to give some background about her practice here in Princeton, what goes on upstairs with staff, what she proposes in this room downstairs, number of employees, the hours that the facility might be open, and things of that sort.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Katie Eastridge. I'm an interior designer, and my practice has been in Princeton, New Jersey, for 28 years. We have enjoyed leasing properties on both Tulane Street and Nassau Street, and it was a wonderful opportunity for me to be able to participate in Princeton's history by purchasing the building at 342 Nassau. I'm proud to say that I'm now steward of a building from 1735, and it's been my intention since the beginning of the purchase to take care of the building and let the next generations make any changes that I have no intention of making. Our interior design practice is small. We do residential interior design. There are two of us that work upstairs and one person that is downstairs. The building is... It doesn't really afford many more people working there than just that. It's an incredibly small room. The first floor, that we would enjoy having a retail showroom, allows for a couple of sofas, a dining table, or two, art on the wall, and an opportunity for us to visually explain to our customers what it is that we're capable of doing.
Great. You're not open all the time? The hours...
Our hours are Tuesday through Saturday, 11 to 5, or by appointment. Since I've been there, we've had a couple of people drop by every afternoon at best. I can't imagine that we're looking for more than that. Just an opportunity to explain to potential or old customers what it is that we do.
Questions? I guess just where did you do this activity that you planned to do downstairs? Or where do you do it now?
What do we do downstairs now?
I imagine you do some retail.
Not now.
Not at all?
I'm waiting until potentially I have approval. Am I answering correctly?
Sure. But there are couches and chairs downstairs.
Oh, we have, yes. Downstairs, right now, it's furnished like a living room, and there's a sofa, dining table, a few napkins.
You oftentimes go out to people's homes.
Most of our practice is going to customers' homes. Is that the right answer?
Is that the answer?
It was a simple question.
I've never done this before.
The answer was more complicated than the question.
Okay, sorry.
Go to the next line. So I mentioned earlier that in 2003, the Borough Board gave Mr. Evans, the fellow with the Tuscan Hills interior design facility in that building, the approval that you see on the screen, the second floor in his case was office, the first floor was to be a showroom. He proposed no changes to the building. There were then and there are now seven parking spaces. Lynda Carnaval, who had used it before that as a real estate office, testified in 2003 that she thought that it would be a less intense use than her real estate office. And the number 13 there, lucky 13, was the one where you restricted it to his use and his use only and not to go into the future. And so that's the facts with respect to the building and with respect to the use. We have the responsibility to go through the criteria from the ordinance, and to do that, we've asked Elizabeth McKenzie to act as our planner and to give testimony on that basis. She'll come forward, and we'll talk about her credentials.
There is an easel over there if you want to use that.
Okay, or if you want to look behind you, it's the same thing.
They have screens in front.
All right.
So you have a choice as to where you want to look. I can sit here if that's easier, and that way...
Anywhere you like.
That way you can stay there. Do you want to qualify me first?
You just tell them all about it.
Okay. I'm Elizabeth, middle initial C, McKenzie, M-C-K-E-N-Z-I-E. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. My office is located at 9 Main Street in Flemington, New Jersey. I have appeared before this board in the not-too-distant past on the Blue Point Grill application, at which time I think you accepted me as an expert, but if you would like, for brevity's sake, to put a copy of my curriculum B-Tight in on the record...
Certainly, you can do that. We will accept you, as we did previously.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Like this Exhibit A2?
Who it is.
In any case, just to briefly summarize, I do provide planning services, both to municipal clients and also to applicants appearing before boards, in this case. I don't know if you need more than that on the record. My license is current, and I have national certification through the American Institute of Certified Planners.
Well, yes, you'd be qualified, Mr. Chairman.
I think he said it was.
Is that all right, Mr. Royce? Is that all right?
Yes, just...
There we go.
Once accepted, you can keep on coming back.
Okay. Thank you very much. You've already had, from Mr. Schmalik, a description of the property and where it's located. If you look at the aerial photograph that is mounted both behind you and also on the graphic display that I have, you can see the property in relation to other properties. Just to fill in what Mr. Bridger described as the surrounding land uses, what struck me about the uses immediately around this intersection was the predominance of design professionals, architects, interior designers, and also real estate offices, which seemed to be hovering around the corner. And then there are also other uses. As you move a little bit further away, you have Merrill Lynch, you have a medical office, you've got the firehouse. You have residential uses, really on both sides of Nassau Street, extending east... west? West? East? West is the subject property, sorry. It's on the west side.
There's also a public parking lot.
Yes. So you have... And then you have over in the area further to the east of the subject property, you start to have, you have a health food store, and you have a lot of more retail characteristic uses. But this is an area where you have a concentration of design professionals. I think that there's a reason for that. The buildings in this area, both the residential buildings in the R3 Zone and then as you get to the R-O Zone, are really lovely old homes that are characteristic, that are the reason this is the Jug Town Historic District. And for that reason, they tend to attract people who are willing to have spaces divided up into small offices and to deal with, you know, an older home, and they like the charm and attractiveness of the older home. So it works for those kinds of offices. And for that reason, I think my client was attracted to this particular building, which was erected in the 1730s. I think what's important about this application is that the use that my client is making of the non-residential portion of what is a joint occupancy building, because it has an apartment that is located just on the west side and is sort of an annex to the building, and then there's the main part of the building is used for her use, is that she's really, it's primarily an interior designer's office. What she's contemplating and what is proposed in this case is to be able to have on the first floor an interior design showroom where clients coming in can get a taste of what her taste is and get a sense of the kind of work she does. The furniture, I was in there today, and the furniture is grouped very tastefully as a sort of dining area and a couple of living area spaces. It's not, it doesn't appear like a retail store. There are not racks. There is nothing about it that would suggest or that is even proposed to be anything different from really a sort of living room-type gallery setting to show off what she does. But the items that are in there would be available for sale to clients who, you know, like that mirror or like that particular couch and want to purchase it, and that's the reason for asking permission. The R-O Zone, in which this property is located, is a residence office zone. It is clearly the intention of Princeton not to allow retail uses, typical retail uses, in the R-O Zone. And I would have a hard time coming before you and saying, "We want something that is a very typical retail use with a counter and shelves and, you know, traffic coming in and out throughout the day." That's not the intention here. This is really ancillary to the interior design office that my client runs, and it's something that is sort of an enhancement of that office and supports the office, as opposed to a more traditional retail use where you have a very tiny office and you have primarily retail sales, and the very small office supports the retail sales. In this case, it's decidedly the opposite. You have the space on the first floor that will show off some of what she does and the kinds of styles that she chooses, but the office is the main practice within the building and will continue to be so. The area that we're talking about is roughly 20 by 20 feet. It's sort of divided by a wall that comes out, so it lends itself to arranging sort of three separate room areas as part of that space, and that's how it appears. But the benefit of this is that there will be the ability for people who want to wander in, they see it's a design professional, if they wander in, they will be able to get a sense of what she does, and it will also allow the fact that they have to have somebody on the first floor to receive people that come in, will give that... And it's something that is sort of an enhancement of that office and supports the office as opposed to a more traditional retail use where you have a very tiny office and you have primarily retail sales and the very small office supports the retail sales. In this case, it's decidedly the opposite. You have the space on the first floor that will show off some of what she does and the kinds of styles that she chooses, but the office is the main practice within the building and will continue to be so. The area that we're talking about is roughly 20 by 20 feet. It's sort of divided by a wall that comes out, so it lends itself to arranging sort of three separate room areas as part of that space. And that's how it appears. But the benefit of this is that there will be the ability for people who want to wander in, they see it's a design professional, if they wander in, they will be able to get a sense of what she does. And it will also allow the fact that they have to have somebody on the first floor to receive people that come in, will give that person a function in showing people things and if they're interested in buying them and completing those transactions. The property that we're dealing with has a number of deviations with respect to the placement of the existing building. It's oversized for the minimum lot size requirement in the RO zone, but because of the placement of the home, which was built in the 1730s, it does not meet side yard setbacks. That's in part a function of the fact that the road, North Harrison Street, was widened after this house was built. And in fact, the annex that's now on the west side used to be on the east side. And the house also sits 10.2 feet off Nassau Street. So there are some existing deviations associated with the lot, the lot coverage, the building coverage rather, the building height, the floor area ratio, all of those parameters are met. So the lot is not in any way overbuilt. We do need C variances for the existing setback deviations, but I think they can easily be justified as C1 variances. And the only way to cure them would be the removal of the existing building or the relocation of the existing building. And given its presence in an historic district, I think that that would do more harm than good to the neighborhood and to the intent and purpose of your zone plan. So that is the testimony I'm going to offer you on the C variances. We have no other new variances, C variances or design waivers. All we have is the D variance to allow the designer showroom because of the terms and conditions of that resolution from 2003 that you saw that specifically state that the variance that was previously granted for a showroom was limited to that particular professional's use of the space. And I have to say that looking at your intentions for the RO zone and, you know, looking at the criteria that we have to satisfy with respect to granting a D variance, we have to demonstrate that there are special reasons that justify granting the variance in this particular case, which I'll get to in a moment. But we also have to deal with the negative criteria, the effect of granting the variance on the intent and purpose of your zone plan and zoning ordinance. And also, we have the enhanced burden of proof imposed by the Medici decision wherein there's a presumption that if a use has been consistently not permitted under the zoning ordinance, that that is an intentional omission of that use from the list of those permitted in the zone. There's no question in my mind that the RO zone is not intended for retail uses, in large measure because it encompasses a lot of historic buildings. And it was, there's a recognition that maybe those historic buildings are located in an area with a more commercial atmosphere, so the office uses are allowed, but the intention is not to have an expansion of sort of the retail nodes that are located along Nassau Street. That is very clear, but I think in this particular case, if we look at the nature of the showroom use that is contemplated, it's quite limited and it's clearly ancillary and accessory to the use of the premises for an interior designer. It is not intended to be a separate or independent retail use. In fact, we're not asking for retail use as a sort of broad category. We are asking to have a designer showroom that does allow items to be sold if people are interested in buying them. But I looked at your provision in your 2003 resolution, which limited it to the particular property owner, and it occurred to me that that was an action on the part of the board, which while somewhat irregular in the use variance world, made sense, I think, from the board's perspective in the desire not to have over time and with changes in occupancy of the building, not to have something that was granted as a very limited type of retail or showroom activity in connection with a design professional's office, not to have that morph over the, over changes in occupancy into something that really was an independent retail use. And so I could understand the board's taking that position. And I think that we can achieve that in this case by simply carefully describing what is contemplated and the fact that it is clearly ancillary and accessory to having an interior designer's office on the premises, that it would be a showroom associated with that. And I think you can achieve the same kind of objective and make it clearly enforceable by the zoning officer. I think that fear that might have motivated that original condition can probably be overcome in another way, but nevertheless, I think that's why we're here tonight. You want to know that whatever we're doing here doesn't go far from what you had originally approved or is in fact exactly what you had originally approved in 2003. And I was sympathetic to that because it's often something a board wrestles with in terms of something getting out of hand over a period of time. I think that in terms of the special reasons that justify granting the variance in this case, we do have a number of purposes of the municipal land use law that I think are promoted by granting the variance. I would cite specifically Purpose A, which talks about promoting or encouraging municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner that promotes the public health, safety, and general welfare. And I would venture to say that as your ordinance provides, this site in particular is a very appropriate site for a design professional and that this proposed use would be accessory to that and would support the appropriate use of this property for a low-intensity type of office use. And I think that that's important because it is at a busy intersection. So I think having it, the same low-intensity office use that's contemplated in this case that the applicant actually has on the site is appropriate. Purpose G talks about providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including commercial uses. But again, that goes to the appropriateness of this particular site for exactly the use that is contemplated here. Purpose I talks about promoting a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. We're not proposing any changes to an historic building other than the site improvements that were already previously, and by the way unanimously approved by the Historic Preservation Commission to upgrade the site, to change the, instead of getting, having concrete walkways to have herringbone brick and bluestone walkways and steps and things of that nature.
Are you saying there will be no signage on the building?
The signage that's on the building is the signage that is already on the building.
That won't change?
That will not change. No additional, there's nothing going to be advertising, items for sale, store, none of that will be there. It's just the signage that is currently there on the building will remain. Yes, exactly.
I'll add that there's no signage with respect to retail sales, but there's, the HPC has approved and we're waiting for a sign permit for a ground-mounted sign.
That, excuse me, I stand corrected. That sign hasn't been installed. All the other improvements are in, but that sign that was approved by HPC has not yet been installed, but all it is is an identification sign. It's not, it has nothing to do with, you know, items for sale or anything. That's, you know, the way that my client proposes to handle the sales is really to have just, you know, very discreetly hidden prices on things. And also, there will be no cash register. There's just a little card reader. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty nondescript.
Do we have a copy of that sign that's been approved?
I, I probably have a copy of it if you want from my file.
I think we've got it on the screen. I think we have a slide of it.
Okay.
There it is.
East Ridge Design Home.
Okay, that's on the site drawings, yeah. Okay.
Yes. I'll make that Exhibit A 4, or it's within the?
It's within the slide set.
Is the, is the aerial exhibit that, that's all part of the pass?
Yes.
And then finally, the other purpose is Purpose J, which talks about preservation of historic sites. I think what is contemplated here is entirely, in terms of the use that is occupying the building, is entirely consistent with the historic district as well as with the RO zone, with the only provision being that permission the applicant is seeking to be able to sell some of the items that she's displaying for customers to see. In terms of the negative criteria, I've already talked to you about what I think are the intentions of the RO zone, why this was limited to one particular applicant in the past, and the fact that I think we can achieve those objectives with this application. And I think that is an indication that we will not be violating the governing body's intent with respect to the RO zone and thereby we're satisfying the enhanced burden of proof with respect to the Medici decision. I don't think there's going to be any detriment to the public good if the variance is granted. This site will remain exactly as it looks today, with the exception of the sign, which has not yet been installed. Thank you for correcting me on that. So I think unbalanced, the granting of this variance satisfies the statutory criteria for granting a D variance. And the applicant is, you know, willing to have the record reflect the nature of the use and the fact that it is ancillary to the interior design business.
Not to beat the sign up here, but do we have that in our package or you just have it on the screen?
Excuse me. The sign was part of the HPC submission, so I do have it on the screen, but if you'd like to see it on a sheet, I can provide that as well.
We'd like to see it.
It's not in the sheets that we were provided. It's an interesting procedural process we've been through. We had an administrative approval and HPC review of all of the exterior changes which have already occurred, that this application's characterized as a site plan and use variance, but only because a use variance in a commercial building in Princeton must also be a site plan. We're not doing any site plan work. It's a site plan application with no work. All of the things you see there were approved by HPC.
That's fine. Where, do you have the site, do you have the sign located on your site drawing?
On the HPC plan, SL1, which is on the screen.
Because I don't see it on the site drawing. Where is it?
It's the dark line on the plans that are up there.
Okay. Yeah, it should have been part of the package to us, but, yeah, it's right here.
Oh, okay. Here it is.
So you are doing additional? Oh, there it is.
So that's solid in the detail view, the lower right-hand corner, that solid black short line in the front of the building, that's the sign.
Correct.
And it is located outside of the site triangle at that location.
These show, these drawings show the sign and the location. Should have been part of the package to us.
Yeah, I think it was.
Also doing landscaping work, too. Use the cursor on the computer, you can highlight the location on the slide you've got up at the moment. Is there a cursor?
I'm just not sure how to make the cursor work. I'm trying, but.
Won't go.
Yeah, it's not working.
But it's obvious where it is.
But it's in that lower right-hand corner, that heavy black line there.
It's exactly parallel to Nassau Street. There's one other point I want to mention in my testimony that I neglected to mention, and it was brought up in Mr. Bridger's report, and that is the issue of parking on whether this, you know, proposed designer showroom might, you know, create a need for more parking. Right now, we have seven parking spaces on the site. We meet the requirements for the office use and for the residential apartment space that is in the annex. And in addition, we have sufficient parking so that even if you treated this as a full retail space, which we're not asking you to do, but even if you were to, we would have sufficient parking, there will be, in connection with the business itself, not more than three people associated with the business, two upstairs and one down. And then two spaces are required for the dwellings. We actually, you know, only on a day-to-day basis, only five spaces are required. There are seven spaces on the site.
But there is also a public parking space across Nassau Street.
That is correct.
Behind the graves.
That is true. That is correct. But even without you using that, we have the space on site.
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions on the planner?
We have the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this case? Are you here to address this case at all or just out of curiosity?
Oh, we can have Bed and Breck.
The one on Cherry Hill Road that carried.
Different case.
Sorry?
Different, different case, I guess.
Yeah.
There's nobody here at the speed.
No, no.
That's it?
That's it. To me, the number 13 is the only one that's unusual. I think we've made a case to continue a use that had previously taken place within the space.
You'd like this to continue with the building rather than as I did last time, have it, only one?
Well, this costs thousands of dollars and lots of time and it would just, it's the way the Borough did its business, but it's contrary to what Cox and others tell us we normally do. And so it just, there are other cases that are going to come before you that will uncover some old practices. It won't affect this East Ridge. It's just maybe good practice if you, if you thought about it. If you don't want to do it, it's not going to hurt her. But we would like you to approve the use, the retail use. Thank you.
Mr. Tark, question for you in terms of the conditions placed on any board approval. The resolution from 2003 describes this as a variance for the specific occupancy of the first floor, the joint occupancy built by low-intensity interior design showroom for the retail sales, the minute it explains textiles, I assume, furniture, with no structural alterations or exterior changes, hours of operation. This says 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Tuesdays through Saturdays, with the showroom to be closed on Sundays and Mondays. I believe your client testified, actually, their hours are 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I'm not sure if that matters to the board or not. But I'm assuming that from your client's perspective, those conditions are acceptable to approval that might be forthcoming tonight.
Sure. This fellow had limited hours, she has limited hours. Limited type of retail sales, limited type of retail sales. It's astonishing, but it's almost exactly the same as it was in 2003.
I don't disagree that it would be typical, a use variance would run with the land. So that's why I was asking questions about what conditions would you put on it so that were the property to be sold, it would be clear what's permitted out there and what is not, so that if it changes hands, you know, there aren't too many uses that would be similar to an interior design, as opposed to, you know, could try and argue with their, you know, whatever their uses is very similar.
If the historic district doesn't put constraints on immediately?
I don't, I.
Not necessarily.
Not on the interior use. I mean, they, the representation is that they have come to HPC and have received approval for the exterior.
I mean, the approval we're being asked for seems to be fairly trivial from the viewpoint of zoning. We granted it before and, but it only ran with the particular person. Now we're being asked to make it run with the building. That poses a hazard that if the building changes, it might be different in terms of its retail use.
Well, right now, the resolution from 2003 states there won't be any structural alterations or exterior changes. And certainly, the exterior change couldn't happen without HPC approval because it is in an historic district. I think the difference for the applicant, what they're asking the board to do that's different is simply, it was approved in 2003 for a design, for a design office, but it was limited to that particular owner and tenant. So the request, that's why this owner's back, because they had to come back. They couldn't operate under. They couldn't operate under the prior resolution, given its language. And what they're asking you this time is, would you allow it to run with the land, which is normally how a variance would operate? It will run with the land.
My, my thing is, we might be able to do that. I think the wording of the old 203, the lead-in to the conditions is, is not consistent, where it only grants a variance. But then in Part A, it really describes a limited variance. And if you call in, in the lead-in section that we grant a limited variance as defined in Part A, in my thinking, that works and that could run with the land.
Mr. Tar, I, I, I think we're all on the same page. What Mr. Floyd is saying is that he likes the wording in Paragraph A of the 2003 resolution, and I think that that is consistent with what you're asking for tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. I've got a planner on either side of me saying, you know, these, this is an accessory use to the, to the primary use within the space. The zoning officer deals with this five times a day. People come in and say, "I want to do this in a building where," and, and that's his job to interpret the ordinance to determine whether that successive user is, falls under the umbrella of the, the one that was approved. Our problem was that this, that the earlier guy was cut off, so there was nothing to piggyback on.
And I, I mean, I think it makes sense that if the board approves it, the resolution would make clear that it is accessory to an interior design office, that there's not going to be a freestanding showroom should the property change hands.
Exactly right.
So we can, we can frame that once decided. So let us, let us decide what we want to do. And we've incorporated, it seems to me, Paragraph A of the previous one into whatever we say we're up to. Basically, it will run with the property unless there's a change in intensity of use or something like that. So what do we think? I mean, this seems reasonable?
I think I'm very comfortable with it. It's consistent with previous approvals and I have no problem with it.
Any other comments?
I think, I support it, you know.
You support it? You think it's a sensible idea?
Due to the very low intensity of the use, which is what the town wants, so it's, it's the benefit. You could probably have a higher office use that would exceed that activity. So I think it's fine.
Mr. Tannenbaum, any comments?
I, I support it.
Okay.
I was thinking, when I first saw this, I was thinking of Michael Graves offices that were, I think.
The right adjacent to it on the same side. I think it's got a showroom downstairs in which you can buy some of his stuff.
There used to be one on the first floor. I don't know. I, I'm flying a key across the street, but at any rate.
Well, he, he's got.
This seems quieter to me than anything, if that's our concern.
Yeah, I think there's an analogous one in the graves.
Sorry.
Yeah. Okay, then. So we need a motion and a second, and we can vote.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application and obviously concurrent, consistent with, with running with the land.
Okay. A second for that motion?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. You want to call the roll for us?
Mr. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman voice?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
Good. All right. So I don't think we have any other business, so we are adjourned.
Congratulations.
Until next month.